Oftentimes, we have scouts come in and if we do have one here. Okay, we welcome you. We'd like to actually have you tell us why you're here tonight. And I actually invite you to come up to our microphone. You don't need to give any personal information, just which troop you're with maybe and what you're studying tonight.
Um, well, I'm just being...
Up to the microphone. Oh, no, turn around. Right there. There you go. We'll record it.
Okay. So I'm doing the community and the citizenship and the community merit badge and I'm from troop 808.
Okay. Well, welcome. You came on a busy night. Okay. Thank you very much. Let's see, next we have our minutes of April 2nd. Need a motion on the minutes.
Motion to approve minutes of April 2nd?
2nd. Okay, property force, any further comments on them? Okay, then all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, as we have on our regular agenda, we often have different presentations, awards, different things, and tonight is no exception. We are receiving an award from the Utah Recreation and Park Association. I believe Leanne Powell, their executive director, is here.
Hi, over here.
So we will invite you up to the microphone here.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Mayor and council members for allowing me to have a few moments to do actually three awards. So as you mentioned, I'm the executive director of the Utah Recreation Parks Association. So we represent 1,300 park recreation professionals all throughout the state of Utah. And we do an annual conference. And as part of that conference process, we have our peers nominate different potential award winners for a number of different opportunities for awards. And then we get all of our past presidents of our association together and they vote on those awards. And so West Valley City was very well represented this year. And if I may digress just for a moment, probably preaching to the choir, but one of the things I hope you guys realize with your parks recreation department is you truly have the leaders in the state. Your department constantly is involved with every program that we do as leaders and participating in them and really kind of set the tone and the direction for the other professionals in the state. So you should be proud of the work that they're doing. And I'm proud to be here tonight to honor them and some of the great things that are going on. So the first award that we have is for outstanding adaptive program. One of the things as an association is we think it's very important to look at innovative programs. And again, West Valley has kind of been a leader in providing inclusive programs. So trying to make all of their programs very inclusive, but then also doing specialized adaptive programs. So they were nominated for the Veterans Golf League that you guys run during the spring. In fact, I think it might have started this week. And as the past presidents looked at all of the different awards, I think that one of the reasons that this award was given was just for the kind of the innovative and out of the box. It's not a typical in a gym type of a program. It's out in nature. It's getting veterans involved and active military and their families and really providing programs that can be impactful in their lives. So I'm actually going to ask Brandon and Bryant to come up. I think they have a couple stories they can share, just to give you a flavor for what that program actually looks like as it's taking place.
Thank you. Mayor Bryant Beauchard, the head golf professional at The Ridge. This is our assistant, Brandon Wren. And one of our most outstanding veterans, Mr. Ed Shipley, who is a big advocate for our program. We could not be more excited about this program. Started it three years ago. It's doubled in size each year. We did start it yesterday. And even with half of our T-shirt gone for a high school tournament, we still had 30 veterans come out and play golf in the Veterans League on day one, which was phenomenal. And we hope to reach numbers up to 60, 70, 80, and keep it growing. I'd like to read just a quick paragraph of a summary of what we do for the Veterans League and a quote from a few of them. Says, "The West Valley City Veterans League has made important inroads at addressing the specific and critical needs of veterans, active-duty military, and their families in our community. Through the medium of golf, an environment created by our courses and staff, an opportunity of camaraderie, connections, healing, and healthy active living has made available to these heroes. This discounted league offers an adaptive golf program, free club rentals, and free closing social dinner, along with free clinics and instruction." And the second year play, again, we saw double in participants from year one. And this is a group from the Baylor House comes down. And these groups are a supported group of needy and chronically homeless veterans. And an extended version of our league is now across our, excuse me, our season. It used to be four months, now it's six months. And these veterans from the Baylor House now come down every week and we give them this opportunity to get out and play golf with us. And it says, "To put simply by two participants, this got me out of the home and I needed this." So we're very, very proud of this league.
So on behalf of your RPA, I'd like to present this award to your parks recreation department.
We like to take pictures.
Pictures, good. Except I gotta get in. All right. Hope you don't get tired of me. So for the second award, as all of you know, in parks recreation, we rely so much on volunteers, those people that will come and help us and coach and be part of our programs. And so one of the things we do as an association is do an outstanding volunteer award. And this year, the outstanding volunteer goes to Joyce Fager. So Joyce is one of your fitness instructors. Where's that? Oh, there she is. She is one of your fitness instructors at the Harmon Senior Center. And she was a part of a program for many years and then it was announced that you weren't going to be able to have that particular class anymore. And so Joyce volunteered to become the instructor. So I think for the last six years, she's been the instructor twice a week of this fitness program. And really, I think, as I read the nomination and as the past presidents voted on this award, it was just really the idea of how she just kind of took everybody under her wing. And it's just all about love and trying to get people out of the house and staying fit. And it helps physically, it helps mentally, just to be out in the community and be a part of such a great program. So because of her great efforts, the past presidents and your RPA is honored to have Joyce Fager as our outstanding volunteer. There you go. And pictures.
You guys, she gotta get in. She's in front of...
One thing she didn't tell you is she's 83 years old.
83 years, y'all. You gotta run to that podium. Here, you guys come take pictures of her.
Couple more, couple more.
She's got the best smile up there.
She's our perfectionist.
All right. And lastly, but certainly not least, is our outstanding sponsor. So again, with parks recreation, we're constantly looking for community partners that can come in and help in whatever way they can to make our programs bigger and better and reach more people. That's really, we're just all about trying to get as many people involved in programs as possible. So the outstanding sponsor is going to be presented to Pete and Arlene Harmon and the Harmon Foundation for their efforts, not just one year or two years, but their longstanding commitment to West Valley City. As you well know, they donated Pete's childhood home to become the senior center in your community. You know, it's interesting, we have a leadership academy and probably the highlight of that program is when we come and tour that senior center. Because it just has a different feel. It's a home, right? And it's surrounded by love and there's great programs going on, great people like Joyce coming in and having fitness classes. And it really is, again, kind of an innovative way to bring the community together. So the other thing that I think is very important is it wasn't just a one-time donation. It's been an ongoing, every year they come in, they help with programs, they celebrate different things during the year. And it's just, it's truly representative of what a community program and a community place is supposed to be. So because of that, again, the past presidents felt like this was the absolute best use of their time and efforts in looking at who would be the outstanding sponsor. So again, we're proud to have the Pete and Arlene Harmon and that foundation receive this award. Thank you again for the opportunity to come and present these awards. Again, your staff is doing an outstanding job and you have a great community that rallies together for these great programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate the recognition that they receive our parks recreation. It's great to see success. Now, I know all of you want to stay with us and go right to the bitter end, right until we finish up at 11 o'clock tonight. If you decide you can't just stay, it's okay. No, we're not going to 11 o'clock. Okay, next on our agenda is our public comment period. And we have several people who've signed up, some who've done it before, but not sure that all have. And so I would say just remember five minutes maximum. We have, all comments are directed to the mayor. It is not a discussion. It is not question and answer, and certainly not a debate. It is simply five minutes max for a person to share their comments. And since there are some people who haven't been here before, I would mention why. To protect our citizens from any discussion that might take place in the back room, state law requires all of our agendas be published in advance, given public notice at least 24 hours, although we usually do ours several days in advance, so that everyone knows what we might be discussing, even if we don't take any action on it. And that was the intent and spirit of the law called the Utah Public and Open Meetings Law. And so if we don't respond, if we do, we have to be very, very brief. Typically, I'll just make a comment to maybe add it to an agenda or something. But we don't have that discussion. So we'll now call upon these individuals. By the way, we never let it take more than half an hour. Of course, it never taken a half an hour, if I can recall. We wish we had that problem, more public comment. So we'll start first with Jim Vysok. Come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Jim Vysok. It's funny you talk about notice. That's kind of what I'm here to talk about. But I want to say one good thing. In this study meeting, I saw you put it to staff about code enforcement and recording devices or something like that. I think that's a good move because of their dealing with the public. But I don't want to see parking, of course, to lose theirs, because if you've ever watched Parking Wars or whatever, they could have some bad things too. So they need their cameras too. So I don't want to see them lose it. We were talking about notification, how you guys notify so far in advance. I'm going to start once again asking about code enforcement notifications. In the study meeting, you talked to the council about what happened last week, and I was also there. I moved down from Drum, Idaho a year ago, and I had to deal with code enforcement. What they do there, now a town of approximately 20,000 people, one code enforcement officer, first notification is a yellow card and paper put on your garage door with red duct tape. You can't miss, you drive down the street, you can tell everybody who's been cited what it's for. Second time, that notification goes on your door, along with being mailed to you. The third time, and this is one thing I believe the city needs to do, is that's when you send a certified mail along with the notifications. I know it was brought up in the meeting, that certified mail, they can refuse it, not get it. But the post office puts that on there. They have a little checkbox, tried to deliver once, tried to deliver twice, or it was refused. That's still proof that you guys tried to do it instead of somebody saying, "Well, I didn't get it. I didn't..." This takes away that option if you do that. And then the only time that they tape something on the door is the fourth time, when they're actually doing the seizures. During the seizure, they go and they put a notice on the door. I think that can be done ahead of time. And we'll go into notifications. I have some dates and I contribute to one issue that's going on. On 3/11, a seizure happened. On 3/11, let me check my notes. A hearing was requested on the case. On 4/1, the letter was written. On 4/3, it was postmarked. On 4/8, they received it. The hearing is tomorrow. How does he get disclosure? In the letter, it says, or how does this person, not this he, how would this person get disclosure under those conditions? There's a problem with the notification. I think it just needs more investigation. So let's see. There was also an issue with the grammar request in video. Got all the other documents. He said video is going to be a while out. The video's been downloaded. You've all seen, you know what it's going to talk about. It's there. I don't understand what the problem is I'm getting. Them, especially before their hearing, I'm sure it's going to be brought up at the hearing. Not sure, but it'll probably be brought up at the hearing. You know, once again, notification. There's a better way to do it. I think it needs to be researched. So that's it. Once again, thank you for my new cat. I'm sure you guys saw it in the paper. So she's this little star. And we didn't prompt her. She jumped up like that when we got the camera out. So, yeah. She's like, yeah, but thank you.
Thank you. Next is Aaron Flatter. Hope I pronounced that right.
Close. It's a common mispronunciation. It's Aaron Flater. Thank you, Mayor Bigelow. And council members, it's an honor to be here tonight. I just want to introduce myself and my family a little bit. I'm a longtime resident of West Valley City. I've lived in West Valley for 26 years. My wife has lived here her entire life. We're the parents of four wonderful children. And oldest is on a mission in the Netherlands right now. My next one's a senior at Cypress High School, one at Matheson Junior High, and then one at Gerald Wright Elementary. I'm not here to brag about my family tonight, although I probably could do that for longer than five minutes. I and a group of homeowners next to me, my neighbors, would like to present a proposal to purchase land from the city behind our properties to essentially extend the size of our property boundaries. And I have an outline of my remarks, bullet points, and also a sketch of the proposal of the lot extensions that we would like to present to the city council. Is it okay if I approach to hand those out?
Yes.
Okay. Another document that I don't have enough copies for everybody to have one is just a map of our section of West Valley. And the portion that I'm talking about is highlighted so that you can see where that is in reference to the rest of the city. And so I don't lose or waste any time. I'd just like to start out by saying, "The West Valley City Master Plan indicates that the city would like to encourage higher-value housing." It also says that the city lacks in higher-value housing and that the city needs to continue to concentrate on improving housing opportunities for higher-inroom households. Section 7.1 also indicates that the goal of the city is to promote higher-value single-family homes on larger lots. And the action for that particular goal is when considering residential rezone requests, to approve developments, redevelopments, or excuse me, to approve developments that will increase the city's average lot size. The proposal that you can see on page two of the handout that I've given you has eight lots. And there's city-owned property behind our lots. It's currently maintained or managed by Public Works. And it's a field essentially of weeds. In the back end of the field near Parkway Boulevard, there's a drainage area that has drainage for storms and the 100-year storm. There's a portion of that property that's essentially a flat field with just weeds. And we would like to extend our property boundaries. We've talked to all of our neighbors and everybody's in accordance. Everybody would like to extend their properties back. I would just note that the square footage of the current lots and the proposed extensions are handwritten on the map that I provided. Five of the eight properties are currently a quarter acre or less. The proposal would give eight lots with an average lot size of just over 20,000 square feet, which is approximately .46 acres. It would allow the city to meet the goal of larger lots, would enhance the value of our homes, and would allow improvement of the property that is currently weed of fields. Couple of other considerations. On each side of this field in question, there's a trail system that goes through the city, which is actually very nice, but dead ends on each end of this. There's a portion just behind Gerald Wright Elementary where the field dead ends and it's not maintained. And there are a lot of weeds there. So our request respectfully is that the council consider our proposal. And if you have any questions, I am available to contact at any time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Eric Brown.
Hello, I'm Eric Brown, mayor and members of council. Sorry, I'm not as eloquent a speaker as my neighbor, actually. So we're actually both here essentially presenting the same information. The other portion that he had talked about was the portion of trail system that goes behind the school. And maybe I would emphasize on that part is that half of it is called Foxtail Park. The other half is just a bunch of weeds, mostly seems to be kind of those goat head stickers that makes it so none of my kids or anyone else's kids can ride their bike to school or back. I think one of the things we're interested in is getting that trail system finished, also getting that park finished, so that it's a usable area that makes it so the kids can get to school and back on bicycles and without having to repair two flat tires every single time they go to school. I don't know if I have anything else. That's probably it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here for our public comment period? Seeing no takers. And back to us. Mr. Isaac, any comments you want to add tonight?
I'll serve. Thank you.
To our council. Okay. What we'll do, we'll put on our agenda for next week in our study meeting, I guess, to talk about body cams with ordinance enforcement and then also the notification issues so that we can have a discussion and see where we take it from there. And then also, we'll put on there this purchase of city property. That would merely be an initial discussion since there's a lot of ramifications of change of ownership of property. That will just be our initial comments on it. But we'll put that on our study agenda for next week so that we actually can discuss it. And let's see. With that then, we go on our agenda to resolution 19-40. This is to reaffirm the city's commitment to the completion of 4100 South Reconstruction Project. As is happening in many instances now, project was approved along 4100 South. Funds were obtained from some federal money, state money, and of course, city money. And what has happened, of course, is with anything related to construction, whether housing, roads, or buildings, just anything out there, the costs are going up very rapidly. And that has happened on this project. So, yeah, I got it there. And so the increase in this cost has been fairly large. $4.5 million. It's a large project. But 4100 South from Bangator Highway to 5460 West, we are working on. And the bids that came in from what we thought it would be was, the bid was nearly 29% higher. And so an additional cost has come in. Now, the additional cost is $4.3 million based upon that bid. But we're setting our approval at $4.5 million, just so that we have any contingencies for any unknown items that might arise, so that we don't have to bring it back again. Interesting situation to be in. These funds will come from our Class C road funds. in this project, and so they don't want to get into it and have it not completed. So our choice was either stop or pay the extra money. So I think I got most everything there, but the council is always welcome to weigh in on any additional comments and/or motions.
Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 19-40.
Second. Well, we can only go to seventh, so. It's properly for us. Any final comments? Seeing none, and according to our state law, we go to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Pity Samayo.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling.
Yes.
Councilman Bueller.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Norvell.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. By the way, we don't have to do everything by voice vote, as you saw, we can approve minutes, simple things, but state law dictates specific items that we need to do. Now, we will not have a need for a closed session, and so our regular city council agenda is complete, but we do have a couple of other brief, let's see, one more?
One.
One. Yeah, the other one's next week. One brief meeting right after this for an item of business. With that then.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, it passes unanimously. Our regular city council meeting is adjourned.
This time, Mayor, I called over a special meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency, and note that we've had an opening ceremony, and that all of our agency members are present. The item of business at hand is Resolution 19-02, which is just an approval of an incentive agreement between the agency and Zion Bank Corporation. Mr. Isaac, is there anything pertinent or any additional information you'd like to...
You served very well. I think you said it.
Okay. After that, I return the item to the agency for discussion, or questions, or motion.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of Resolution 19-02.
Second.
Properly before us. Any other discussion? Okay, then we'll turn it over for the roll call vote.
Ms. Ling.
Yes.
Mr. Bueller.
Aye.
Mr. Hune.
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow.
Aye.
Mr. Christensen.
Yes.
Mr. Norvell.
Yes.
And Chairman Pity Samayo.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
With the motion at hand passed, there's room for one more motion.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any names there? Okay, we are...[1686.32]